I call to order a city council meeting, May 15th. Will the minute taker please take roll call? Nice going. Oh, I totally promised it in there.
Don't say your own name.
Nice going, Amanda.
Hey, say that the meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
It's all done. We can go home.
Is that the last?
We pull a power play.
I call the city council meeting of May 15th to order. Will the minute taker please do roll call?
Oh, it's a new name. Alderman Cadala.
Here.
Alderman Knite. Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Felice.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Will you all stand and please join me with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 1, 2008?
Second.
Second. Any comments, corrections, additions? Alderman, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bills, Alderman, Wesley.
I'm making a motion to pay the bills, $921,342.04.
Say a second.
Second.
On the question?
Here, I have a couple of questions.
Alderman Wesley.
Page five.
Alderman Wesley. As an Alderman, you should know that you need to use the microphone.
Page five, Mayor. Will be the Dutch Valley Landscaping wood chips. Are those the wood chips that were hauled from Station Drive, if I ask?
Mr. Home.
That would have been the wood chips from the last part of last season, correct. Out of Station Drive.
So now that we have a tree service contract that we hire, we will not be having that bill any longer?
We'll still have some wood chips in-house, because we still do some tree trimming and pruning in-house. But you're right, from the weekly or monthly brush collection, we won't be having that anymore.
Okay. Mayor, may I carry on, please?
Alderman.
Mayor, the page 11. Mark Dunham into tree inventory project for a total of $9,925.
Mr. Home.
Yeah, actually, we got really good on that. We, that's part of our overall Parkway Tree Care Program. Our first step was to take an inventory of all of our Parkway trees, size, species, condition, location. This gentleman, we've done about three-quarters of the town. He is an expert who actually travels across the country speaking at various municipalities and government agencies and schools. He has secured a state grant and has basically indicated that the remainder of this inventory will be done at no cost to the city. And then he will provide technical support for the inventory over the next several years, again, at no cost to the city. So, well, we did have to pay the upfront cost to get him in the door and get three-quarters of it done. The remainder will be all for free.
Well, that will tell us what trees are, ash trees, and everything?
Size, species, condition, yes.
And then the other concern I have is on page 12, Mayor. The floor covering on the city logo. Is that the final payment for that? I thought there was a couple council members that were concerned about the way that turned out.
Mr. Murmice.
I'd have to talk to Mr. Forrest on that. I don't want to comment for sure on that one. The last one was a partial payment. I think this one's still another installment, but I'm not going to commit until I talk to Mr. Forrest.
Okay. Well, then, I have no problem paying the bills and I heard that.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Ho.
Yes.
Alderman Felice.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the city council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, starting with Dory Madonna.
Good evening. Dory Madonna, 140 Janus Court, Wooddale, Illinois. I'd like to thank the city council and the staff for expediting the laying of the gravel along School Street. Work has been done. I had gone over there today to see it. I think it was a very nice job. There is now parking for five cars. Mr. David Graff is working on having signage done in-house. He has applied for a permit for, from DuPage County and the Forest Preserve to put up signs on Wooddale Road so that the citizenry of Wooddale and the surrounding area are aware that there is a bike path and a walking path on the Wooddale Atasca Reservoir. I'd like to also address you on one more matter. That is in regard to the Stormwater Committee. I understand you are considering pesticides, fertilizer, and organic fertilizer, and the payment of contracts or the awarding of contracts for that. This was something that was brought to our committee in April of 2006 by a resident by the name of Gail Bedard. And at that time, we discussed the use of fertilizers, organic fertilizers, removing the possibility of using any types of pesticides, mainly because of the effects that these materials have on our ponds and on our waterways. And at that time, it was decided that we would do a test pond. And this was done for the year of April 2006 through November of 2006. It was the Addison Road Pond. And at that time, I believe Mr. Gary Home was still our liaison. And in his report to us in that November, or in that October of that year, he told us it had worked very well. The only thing that was used on that pond was organic fertilizers. We did not use any type of pest control or weed control. And because of that, in November of 2006, we had discussed adding two ponds. And two additional ponds were to be used as test sites. And those were the pond on Third Avenue and also the pond on Montrose. And again, subsequent to this, last October, we had a discussion with Mr. Dave Graff, who is now our representative to Stormwater. And in it, he was very pleased with the condition of the ponds and the fact that we did not have to use fertilizer, that there is enough fertilizer, I'm sorry, we did not have to use any type of weed control, that there is enough weed control that is provided with the runoff of the water, the storm water, into these ponds. In November of that, of 2007, there was a motion made by the Stormwater Committee requesting city council that, for this coming year, that we abandon using all weed control pesticides on all of our dry bottom ponds. And I don't know if you have been aware, made aware of that motion. It was made by Roy Sign. It was seconded by Mrs. Veronica Shockey. And it was approved unanimously by our committee. So what we are requesting is that you certainly consider not using any types of pesticides or weed control on the dry bottom ponds, that you use organic fertilizer. Because as a city and as a community, I think we all want to become more green and be aware of the effects that these things have on our environment. So that, I'm asking you to consider that when you deliberate what you will be doing as far as the contracts for these ponds next year. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chairman Madonna. Mayor Byrne, your thoughts on the Stormwater's request to abandon use of fertilizer on the dry retention ponds? One of the things you can do when you get stuck like that, you just refer it to committee. Just pick a committee and refer it to them. But actually, that's on the agenda for later tonight. Anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? Mr., I'm sorry, Raphael Royal?
Mr. Mayor and distinguished aldermen of the city council. My name is Raphael Royal. I own Raphael Custom Tailor Shop, located at 331 North Wooddale Road, one block side of this building and the other side of the road. I have been a tailor for 30 years, beginning my career in New York City, the city with a beautiful Central Park. Now I am a third year of conducting my professional services in designing and making men's and women's clothes here in Wooddale. I have come here tonight to express my gratitude to acting city managers and staff and city officials for beautifying my downtown area of Wooddale. I'm in my three-year here. I have seen the 7-11 store change into a park, area with good curving. The corner of Wooddale and Urban Park have been planted with attractive and interesting wind sculptures. Each year, I see beautiful flowers and new around the clock tower across the street from my tailor shop. Now I have learned that the city will reconfigure Commercial Street west of Wooddale Road. My purpose of speaking tonight is to express my hope that with the new configuration, you will continue to beautify my downtown Wooddale like Central Park in New York. A flower park in the downtown with walking path for two-person to stroll and benches to sit on in a wonderful flower garden with perennial like lilacs will certainly lead itself to an attractive downtown. I hope that you can and will incorporate perennial flowers with beautiful blooms into the lawn use across the street from 331 North Wooddale Road. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Royal. We welcome you to our business community and appreciate your comments. Anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? If not, I do not have any written communiques. Under Mayor's Report Council, I appoint Barb McCauley to the Clean Air Counts Committee. Item B, you may have noticed that we have some additional members of the city council this evening. This is Student Government Night, sponsored by the American Legion Post 1205. Ralph, Mr. Bargatell, do you have any comments you would like to make?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, and I'd like to thank the city council and the city of Wooddale, including the staff and all that, all the people involved for cooperating with our post and having this Student Government Night. I would hope that the people that are here from the high school will get a good eye-opener as to how local government works with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. It's always a pleasure to participate in Student Government Night. And one of my favorite things is to give the students a little bit of airtime and ask them to give us some advice on how Wooddale can be a better community. I warned them that I was going to do this in advance. And Mayor, I'll give you the option of speaking last. So let me call on Evan.
I think our town in Wooddale could really benefit from a park or a little movie theater, like get a downtown kind of thing going. I'll pass it to Kate.
Kate? One of the things Alderman do not get to do is control the meeting and say who gets recognized. That's the mayor's function. Kate?
I probably would say the same thing. I believe that this town, Wooddale, where the younger population, like our age, would most strongly agree on like movies and and maybe like some more stores.
Stores that income that sales tax is always a good thing for the city.
Like more clothes stores or?
As long as they're spending money, that's fine. Alex?
I also agree with Evan and Kate as well that we should have a, like a movie theater area or something in the town of Wooddale. Also, maybe a little cafe or something around that area. So after the movie, whoever shall attend to the movies, maybe go get a bite at the cafe or just sit down and relax and whatnot.
Nikki?
I agree. No, I think, I think if we have more like clothing stores or cafes and like a pool hall in our town, then like our students wouldn't be going to different towns and spending tax money there. So we would benefit from that.
Teresa?
Um, I also agree with them. Um, and I think Nikki was right. Um, we do go other places to look for like somewhere to do like our homework or just hang out and have fun with our friends. And, yeah.
Maria?
Um, just like Nikki said, if we had our own town center place to like hang out and have a place to just go to, instead of us, people from our own town going to other towns to have, to spend money there, people from other towns come to our town and it'll be a more attractive place to go to. More restaurants, maybe.
Mayor?
Well, I definitely agree with Nikki like the rest of them. But I think that it's important to have places that are popular as of right now, like Buffalo Wild Wings, Panera Bread, all the places that are located in Elmhurst, which is where the high school population is. And now who all has their license, that's where they're all going. So I think to have places like that in Wooddale, somewhere closer to home, would be a lot better.
Alderman Lewitin is chairman of economic development. Can you get that done in the next 30 days?
I think if they would like some custom clothes, I know where they can go.
One of the questions that I asked the kids before the meeting tonight is given the challenges the city faces with the expansion of O'Hare Airport. Traditionally, our community, along with Bensonville, has been opposed to an expansion of the airport. There's also the contravailing philosophy that it's going to happen and we need to take full economic advantage out of it. What are your thoughts? Should Wooddale continue the opposition to the expansion of the airport? Should we be active partners and seek whatever economic development advantage we can get out of it? What are your thoughts? What are your suggestions? Who wants to answer? Alex?
Um, I, I can see both sides of the argument. If we were to oppose it, then more residents would stay in the area and more likely not to move out. But if we didn't fight it and assume the economic or whatever, we could get more like people coming out from the airports, coming in through our towns and just seeing what it's like here and then possibly coming back and whatnot and spending more money in our areas. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Um.
Sure.
I think, um, right now, there's not much saying. There's, it's been done. Too many people have moved out and businesses are closing down and students are moving, from our school are moving to other cities. And it's happening right now.
Anyone else? One of the other issues that are going to be facing the city council shortly, and this one I didn't prep them on in advance, is we're going to be faced with the issue of upgrading our infrastructure, particularly the sewer plant. The options are to upgrade the existing plant at a cost of, I don't know, 15, 20 million dollars, or do we build a new plant from scratch for 50 million, 75 million? And how do we finance that? Certainly, one of the roles of the city is we have to maintain our infrastructure. What are your thoughts? What should we do and how should we pay for it? Mayor?
Well, I think it depends on how badly it's needed. If you don't need a completely new one, then I don't think the money should be wasted to completely redo it from scratch.
Any other comments?
Oh, Nikki.
Um, I think we should do it from scratch. Like it might cost more, but in the long run, it'll probably benefit us, seeing that we won't have to redo it over and over. We'll be saving money. And as far as raising money for it, like the city, the park that we were just talking about, I think that would probably, we would get the taxes from that and that would definitely help.
Any more comments?
One of the other issues the city of Wooddale is facing is we're about to hire a new city manager to run the day-to-day operations of the city. And one of the issues we're facing is should we or should we not require that that new manager live within the city of Wooddale? If they're a resident of DuPage County, they may have children that attend Glenbard North and they may live in another community. Is it important that the new city manager be a resident of the city of Wooddale?
I think it is important so he knows what is going on in the city and gets a vibe of what's going on and.
And you have to be politically correct and say he or she.
He or she. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you short.
Okay, I'm done.
Alex?
Um, I also agree that he or she should live in the city of Wooddale because they, they will see what's going on with the city and like what needs to be done and whether or not like what, whether or not like what they're supposed to be doing day-to-day is right. Instead of living in another town, not really seeing what's going on. And, yeah.
You remind me a lot of the person standing to your right there. They did a great job, didn't they? Council, you should have a certificate in front of you if you would present it to your Alderman or Mayor next to you. Evan, congratulations to you. Well done. And Amanda?
Thank you.
I'll present you with this certificate as acting mayor of the city of Wooddale. Did any of the Aldermen have any comments? The other Aldermen have any comments or questions they want to ask the students? This is amazing. They're never this quiet before. If not, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is Streetscape Report. Alderman Cadala?
The issue before us is, is that of the next project that Streetscape is looking to accomplish. And if you will remember from last week's meeting, we never really had policy. And that's one of the things that was discussed regarding spending ability of these mayor special committees. And if I recall correctly, what came out of that was that any expenditures, I don't know that we even came to a hard dollar amount, but of any significant dollar amount whatsoever should at least be discussed at, at council. And so what I am looking to run by the council here is the, the possibility or the proposal by Streetscape to, to install brick pavers at what we have been calling Shorty's Triangle now for some time in the area that currently has mulch walking paths. I, I know that staff was, was directed to go out to bid. I think there was something like Mr. Manager helped me on this one, five to seven contractors asked to bid. And we do have a winning, winning bid. And I don't have that in front of me. So, Mr. Murmice, if you would please, real quick, run through the scope, if it's anything different than what I said, as well as the dollar amount we are looking to spend on this.
Yes, you provided a pretty good summary. The lowest firm was Pine Landscaping, and that was for $4,180. So at this time, staff is just looking for a direction if we, if council wants to move forward with this project or if they don't.
That's the recommendation committee to approve the proposal, not to exceed $4,000?
$180.
$180?
That is the recommendation, yes.
That's your motion?
And that is my motion, yes.
I'll second it.
Alderman Coles?
I'll second it. I expect, I, I think anything that we do over there by Shorty's Little Restaurant in that area makes improvement in Wooddale.
Alderman Winger?
I just want to share also some other perceptions that I've received from, from residents. And the perception from at least one resident was is that we're putting too much in that immediate area. We put the wind sculptures, the garden. And we actually do have the mulch walking path. So we might want to consider another area to beautify another corner of Wooddale there. Thank you.
Alderman, please.
I just want to recuse myself from this.
Anything further? Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, was this, I know this came right to council because I don't remember discussing this during committee. Is this a new, I mean, I have no problem proving it, but is this a new standard we go into that we don't discuss in committee? We go right to council with this stuff?
It's actually the old standard, which we haven't followed very often. But mayors, the two mayors committees report directly to the city council under Mayor's Report, which would be Streetscape and Special Events. And hopefully, this, they will be following this new practice in the future so the council does give a chance to give its input on those two community, what those two committees are recommending.
Okay, because I thought the discussion that we were supposed to have tonight was about the train station, the update on the train station. I thought that was discussing committee. Maybe I misunderstood, but is, is this a new procedure we're going to then? Those committees could come right to council now with approval?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, the train station update's going to be the first committee in June.
Alderman Winger?
Just one follow-up question. Why, why the pavers versus just keeping the mulch? Is there like an issue there that we're trying to correct or just make it better? I don't see too many people walking through there, so, but, but the main question is why, why pavers versus keeping it the way it is?
Alderman Caddella?
Streetscape Committee's intention was to, to basically complete that, that park. The, the mulch was, I, you know, was put in to, to get a walking path, to get people to begin to experience the space. It has proven, you know, to require some maintenance. And it really, when you get up there, has a tendency at certain times of the year to look unkempt, especially after a wet season. The pavers are, are one of the, the last things, I think, that are the finishing touches to that, to that space. Another one or two items will be coming before you. And then I believe that's, that should be it for that, that corner. So it's just a sense of completion and, and to make it look more, just look more finished and hopefully get a little bit more use out of it.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, there's one other important piece of information. The Streetscape Committee is anticipating higher pedestrian traffic through one of their new initiatives. We're going to have a historical naming project. And we're naming certain areas in town and we're gonna, they're going to propose like copper and boss plaques or I don't know the exact terminology, but each location will have historical significance. And there'll be something where, you know, pedestrians can come stop by and read. So the paver paths lend better than mulch walking paths.
Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
Mulch disappears in a year's time. You always have to keep replacing it. A year's time, it washes away. So if you have a, a lot of mulch, real rainstorm, it's all washes away. So it's better to put paver in it, in it, in my opinion.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitton?
Yes.
And Alderman Police, you recuse yourself.
That passes. Thank you, Alderman Caddella. Next item under Mayor's Report, not under the agenda, but my annual notice to the citizens of Wood-